Call to order the regular meeting of the Riedel City Council. Call to, uh, roll call please.
Mayor Garance.
Here.
Mayor Burton Woodall.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did not have a closed session, so I'm just reporting that. We will move on to public presentations. This is the time for those persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on the agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not intended. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to three minutes.
I almost say with a fake face.
Nick Angelo, 156 Grandly Heights Road, Mayor Council. Sorry I missed the last meeting, I actually overslept or fell asleep. Got a call saying, "Don't see you on TV." The chamber is holding, thank you, Councilman Wilson. The mayor's holding a candidates forum, two of them actually. District One, Rex Bone and Cliff Berkowitz, I think, will be at the Winema Theater on February 6 between 6 and 8, 6:30 and 8, because of unavailability of one of the candidates for District Two forum on February 8, which is a Saturday. And I believe that one goes from 1 to 4 to be safe here.
And where is it?
At the Chamber of Commerce. So the District One is actually being held in Scotia and the District Two is actually being held in Riedel. There are five candidates for the, pardon me?
District One. No, you can say it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, yeah, I keep getting them flipped, but yeah. So we will, we have a series of eight questions at this point, three minutes response because there are so many candidates in District Two. Those questions have all been put out or will be put out this evening to each of the candidates and the incumbents. And then there'll be a question and answer period from the public after the forum and opportunity to meet and greet after the forum and before the forum. With regard to, I see it's on the consent calendar, but any coordination with the chamber regarding the lights and the tree trimming, please give me a call, we'll arrange, Kyle, we'll arrange to remove anything that needs to happen or, we left them up because the lights are pretty and we were, everyone there who was taking them down representing the community said, "Let's leave them up." I capitulated. We'll loosen the lights about mid-year and replace any ones that are out about mid-year and then do that again at Christmas time to make sure that the trees don't grow into the lights and the lights hurt the trees or the trees hurt the lights. Other than that, the rest of the ornaments are down at this point and we're planning for next year already. So I think that's about all I have that's pertinent. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick, and thanks for all your work on the decorations, putting up and taking them down. We appreciate that. All right. We'll move on to the cons, would anyone else like to speak? No, having hearing none, I will move on to the consent calendar. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull, well, I don't really want to pull one, I'm just going to abstain from voting on that because I wasn't here for the minute.
Okay.
And I'd like to pull four.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember? Would anyone from the public like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Having hearing none, I will ask for a motion for two and three.
And one.
Well, well, I'm not sure how to.
Yeah, she can still.
She can, okay. So one, two, and three, please.
I say move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Vote.
So you want me to vote on the rest of them or what?
Yeah. I was pressing my. Microphone button to vote. It does, it does not work. Item four, Councilmember Strand.
What page is that on?
Twenty-two.
Thank you. Yeah, so I was just questioning the, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Cheryl. Cheryl, thank you, I'm sorry. About the first one there, the health insurance for December to replace the check cashed by wrong vendor, although it, in reality, it wasn't cashed.
It was cashed and we did get it back. I just went and checked.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. And also the safe drinking water, the $68,000 principal payment for dispersment through.
Which number?
It's on the second page, page two in the middle, $68,000.
Okay, thank you.
What's that?
That is the payment on the loan for the capital improvement project that was completed. I'll look at Kyle.
So why are we still making a payment?
Because we have a, like, twenty, twenty-year loan.
Infiltration.
That's for the water treatment facility?
Yeah, that's the infiltration facility of the river.
So that was part of the match for the, for the infiltration gallery?
Down here?
Mm-hmm.
Not over there?
No, the project over across the river was 95% grant funded, there's no ongoing commitment other than the operation maintenance of that facility.
Okay, thank you.
This is the same thing we ran out, we kind of run out of money for, that's why we had to change our rates, is that completely a water thing? Is this part of that or?
This is just part of the ongoing obligations to fund the water system, so it.
Is that an annual? Is it annual?
Yes.
By the way, is it reimbursed on the, paying back a loan or?
Yes, but it's in the budget. Should be on the budget.
Zero interest.
But didn't we run our water fund down so low that we weren't going to be able to do this?
Yeah, we did have to.
We had to adjust our water.
Yeah, so the prior water rates set by the city never included funds for capital improvements, so the city has been dependent for many, many years on grants and as the, as time has moved forward, there has been a requirement for more and more matches to provide those infrastructure improvements. So in this case, this is part of our responsibility to pay for our portion of the water system improvements.
And how many more years are we making this payment?
I would have to look that up.
You have any idea, Kyle?
Not at the top of my head, I don't know.
This goes on indefinitely, doesn't it?
It's not indefinitely.
Be happy to answer any questions on the, on the topic if you want to come by tomorrow to my office.
You can put something in our box, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
As, motion to accept item four.
I'll make a motion to accept item.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second? Vote. Motion passes four, zero. Should be five. I know. I only saw four lights though.
There were five lights.
All right. Five, zero. Reports, Staff Communications, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council, this item's on page 25 of your packet. Just a couple of quick updates that are not part of the written report. We did experience a storm event over the past few days and we did have a sanitary sewer overflow event. Fortunately, it was only about 9,800 gallons from the system of which about 5,000 gallons, so a little bit over half, were captured and then able to be physically transported over to the plant. So again, we just executed a sanitary sewer evaluation study grant that will provide significant financial resources to do an evaluation of the collection system to make the appropriate modifications down the road to the system so that these events don't occur. So there's been a lot of work over numerous years to get us into that position to be able to work on this particular problem. Also, regarding the Danco project, we tentatively have a tour scheduled for Monday, the 27th, at 3:30. And so we are currently working on kind of a more precise schedule for that, but if council members want to just pencil that in, we'll provide some further clarification down the road as to what times will be specifically available for council members. The project is expecting after the 27th to begin filling the apartments there, which is good news. The city manager also did meet with representatives from Recology just this morning to discuss next steps in the universal pickup. So some initial financials were, were produced and we reviewed those with, with Recology and also got an update on where the other jurisdictions, primarily Fortuna and Ferndale are at in that process. So, so we'll be working with Recology to schedule a study session for the council here in the next month or two to sit down and go over those figures. The, Riedel's also been asked to host the League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division Meeting in March, which this would be the first time that the city has ever been, or ever hosted in a league meeting. And the meeting is planned to be held at the River Bluff cottages in the, which is the Danco project, so in their multipurpose room. The central topic of that particular meeting is going to be housing and so Riedel regionally will be showing off or giving a tour to other city council members and officials of that particular project, which again, over the next decade, we can expect more of these permanent supportive housing projects to be rolled out in the various cities in the area.
Is there a date on that, in March or?
Uh, that is going to be probably March 20th. So, and we're also regarding the, the Danco project and the River Bluff cottages, we're currently developing a charitable donation system in order to purchase supplies for residents of the River Bluff cottages. So the idea really ultimately was developed by Councilmember Johnson and in talking with the Danco and the county, they did not think it would be a good idea to set up a donation system where people come by and drop off supplies for the residents there. However, they thought it was a very good idea to try to get funds donated for, for items to be purchased for the, for the residents at the, at the project. So we're getting ready here in the next couple of days to roll that out and do, try to do some sort of press release and do some sort of advertising to raise the funds for that particular project. What we're trying to raise is going to be approximately about $250, somewhere between $250 and $270 per unit, so about just under $7,000 total to try to raise countywide to provide supplies like shower curtains, towels, that sort of thing, for first-time renters or people who are not necessarily going to have access to these types of, of supplies. So we certainly would appreciate any assistance from the council or any assistance from the, from the community in regards to raising these funds.
So why are we as a city doing this? Wouldn't it be better if DHHS or the Community Resource Center did it?
Well, I think the challenge was to, to try, from Councilmember Johnson, to try to get the city into more of a proactive mode of trying to contribute something to the project and try to be more of a positive force for the project.
But still, it's, the whole community's money. I mean, I, I just find it hard to do that. And when I, when you suggested it, I assumed that it was, he was asking the community, not us as a city, to come forward. And we are spending, what, $540 on cups for them.
Yeah, what does it do with that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just concerned that we don't do that for anybody else that moves in and, and it's a great idea and I hadn't even thought about myself as a person buying some baskets and doing it. I just didn't think that it's an appropriate use of the city's time for that area, for certain, you know, to do that for them, unless we're going to do it for everybody. That's just one opinion.
I agree with that. That's, you know, that's something we could certainly take to the churches in town. That is a, something I think the churches would be, in our community, would certainly be willing to be involved with. There's already Ruth Closet at the Baptist Church and, you know, to reach out to community like in that manner. But I agree with Julie, that's, I mean, didn't we already have this discussion regarding chamber money? Mixing city funds with private is sort of a no-no.
My initial thought a month or so ago was to clean our basements and attics and places where we had good serviceable stuff that people who are homeless certainly don't have. And to that end, you know, whether it's us individually or churches or other organizations, I, you know, I absolutely wanted the people that moved in to move into something that they could live in and not have to sleep on the floor, able to cook a cup of coffee because they've got facilities to do that. And if the city, you know, can't, and with the community's help and, and the North Coast help, you know, if we can't get the level of service there, I don't have any problem with the city of Riedel making a contribution to basically first-time renters that, all they've got, they picked out of garbage cans around the county. I think, I think we need to be a little bit more charitable in that.
Would we be charitable to all the new renters that can't afford in town? Let's say when the new four-plex comes in, would we be?
Well.
I, I just don't know where you cut it off.
Yeah. You know, normally those people that move into town have a car to drive and have a U-Haul that packs all their possessions to a new residence. These people don't have that luxury.
Well, I would be all for, like Sue said, going and finding people that would do it, like the churches and organizations.
That, that was my first, that was my first desire.
And now that we're talking about it again, I would be more than willing to go out and I think that would be a more appropriate thing than the city doing it, but that's, like I said, my opinion.
I think part of the, Danco's fear was that they would be sorting through stuff that was not serviceable.
Exactly.
And having to get a big dumpster down there to.
Exactly.
Hall away, you know, the goodwill in quotes, donations from the community.
Well, this isn't exactly why I wanted a citizens committee. I mean, they could oversee things like this. It's making the citizens a part of this project and, in whatever fashion it is. And we already have food bank at Riedel Assembly that comes and we have it up here at the fire hall. I mean, there is things, processes already in the church set up, people who are already helping in these areas that I'm sure can pick up on other items. And if we had an oversight committee other than just staff, people in the community who could act, do these things, that's.
I thought, a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of meetings ago.
Right.
We were talking about doing a committee or program for that, but because Councilmember Strand wasn't here, you wanted, you tabled that to happen.
I tabled it because, yes.
To tell she could be here, because they knew you wanted to be.
Because it. I don't know what you were saying.
That you wanted to be a leader on that or something.
I don't want to be the leader, I think there's a lot of people who would like to be involved with that. And, I mean, and whatever avenues you want to go down, you know, there's a lot of people in our community who care. We live in a wonderful community. We have a lot of people out there who are retired, who are helpful, who have connections inside the city, who can help. So why don't we access that? Why don't we say, "We'd love for you to be a part of this and be a part of our community and could you head up this part?" I mean.
So this sounds kind of like an agendized item now. It's turned back to the agendized item, I think. I mean, I don't know.
Well, I don't know that it has to be sponsored by the city. Does it have to be sponsored by the city? I think that some people had a problem with that. I, I'm perfectly happy to go out and talk to some people and say, "Would you be willing to go meet with," what's the lady's name, Debbie or?
I'm sorry, who are you?
The lady at the.
At the DHHS.
No, at the.
All right, it runs the apartments.
Yeah, apartments. Bonnie.
Kimberly, Kimberly Brown has managed the Riedel apartments for many, many years.
And have them just meet with Kimberly and maybe they can just set something up. And it doesn't have to have anything to do with city council and then our hands are, but certainly Gordon, I can ask them to contact you and if you want to be in charge of the furniture portion.
Well, I, I, I don't want to step into something that Danco is not going to be receptive to.
No, and, but.
And I think, I think.
But that's where Kimberly would come in, right?
Well, somebody, somebody at the lead at Danco needs to say, "We would like to have these donations." If, if, and, you know, you, there's an old couch sitting on the other side of the bridge over by Scotia.
I see that. That's not going to work.
Been there for about a month and a half, two months.
Exactly.
There's another one, two miles down the road, that's been there for a year and a half. That's not exactly what they want.
No, of course not.
They don't want stuff that was worn out and somebody's avoiding garbage fees.
Absolutely.
So would it be helpful if they provided a list of things they would like?
That would be fantastic.
Okay, something. I, I really.
Of course, they could start a GoFundMe or a group could start a GoFundMe, but other than us handling that.
Yeah, I don't really.
So, I'm not really, but she's not an agendized item. There's no action for me to, it's a call for, that's true where, where we are right now, but. Give me something.
We're, we're treading towards a brown act.
We are, we are. That's why I'm like, it sounds like it needs to be on the agenda.
So, yeah, maybe, maybe we could agendize this for our next meeting.
Can I get consensus of the council of what exactly is going to be agendized?
Contact with Danco's representatives to see what donations they would accept from the community.
We're, we're happy to, we're happy to agendize that. As I stated earlier, Danco was not interested in physical donations of used property, but was interested in, and thought it was a good idea to raise funds in order to purchase new supplies for the residents of the property.
So I think then we are going to agendize that topic? Is that where, is that where we are?
I'm for it. That way you can talk about it, not be.
Mayor Garance. Kyle, I had a question about the sanitary sewer overflow. Was it in one of the normal locations or was this some brand-new spot?
It's in a normal, normal location, same problem spot that we've had for a couple of years.
At the end of Painter?
Yes.
And wasn't that, weren't we having discussions with Danco? Wasn't Danco supposed to be fixing that as part of their thing when they came in?
I don't think so, about that one.
Didn't we have this discussion?
Nothing like, it, it turned like into a couple million bucks, is what it, isn't that correct? It's something we looked at was like for a couple hundred thousand dollars and it turned into a couple million and that's why you went for a study to reach out to understand that?
So these are a bunch of different topics here, but the, there was a discussion about the, needed upsizing of the line from the bottom of Painter Street over to the plant that went through and was approved to be funded by the city for a engineering report and, and a cost estimate for the project. Initially, staff believed that it could be done relatively affordably and in short order, but the cost of the, of the upsizing was approximately $1.2 million. So through the sanitary sewer evaluation that your staff secured, the cost of the Painter Street upsizing will be reimbursed through the grant and we will be doing a more comprehensive look at the entire system in terms of how to reduce influence infiltration over, over the few, over the next few decades.
Are there any other questions on the staff report for, any staff member?
For any staff members?
Well, yeah, it's the whole.
Okay, yeah. Chief, I was going to ask, on the house that's burned down, on the Brat House on Monument, I noticed that the, the notice posted was taken down and they've got it boarded. Are they moving, are you moving forward on that one with?
I've received an estimate for the demolition of that structure, not having contact with the property owners. So yes, we're planning on moving forward and.
Oh, I thought you might have been as it was starting.
I need to write an abatement warrant and then get the, the actual demolition scheduled.
Okay. That's all.
Anyone else? Would anyone from the public like to ask a question of the staff, from the staff report? Hearing none, I'll bring it back and we will move on to discussion and possible action of an appointment to an ad hoc committee regarding Wildwood Avenue Gateway Landscaping. Okay, so I approached city manager and brought up the fact that I think that the gateway needs help, needs to be looked at again. It's been 10 or 15 years since it was put in and it's starting to show that. And gateway, generally speaking, is uniform, is consistent, it is a gate. It is a gateway, not this and that and haphazard and some dead trees, some living trees, this type of tree or that type of tree. If it's a true gateway, is it a gateway that, for example, blossoms all the dogwoods at the same time? And you come in and you see this beautiful thing or cherry blossoms or whatever. And so I thought that we could look at some type of plan, making a committee to look at a plan, not just to haphazardly do it because we see what happens. So I'm hoping that we can get a committee and an ad hoc committee and actually just start to look at it and investigate what we can do and come up with some type of plan and bring it to the council and start making that look as beautiful as we can as a gateway. I, it is not a priority of the council, I understand that. But it is, hopefully, we can do more than one thing at a time. And I think it is important to the city to have something that looks nice as you come in. So that's what I was hoping. Open up for discussion.
I was just going to say, the reason it turned out like it did is we had a committee. We're planning it and 15 people on the committee. And I think everybody got one of the trees they wanted to put on.
That's exactly what happened.
And I agree with you. Have you, Willow Creek, if you go over through Willow Creek, they planted trees along. They're all the same trees, they're all upright. They lose leaves so in the winter, so that, you know, it's light. They turn colors in the fall. And it's beautiful, but it's uniform and it gives it a real nice, unlike ours.
I just say, are they, is that alongside the streets, it's not down the middle?
Alongside.
Yeah, and that's, you know, this is something for the committee, which could not be me, but I'm a horticulturist. But is our, the depth of our, you don't go very far and you run into some pretty heavy bays.
Right.
In our islands.
Right, because of the old highway.
We saw the results of that, so that's.
And that's, that's part of what I was hoping to look at, not just like pick a tree and we have trees and then they die in five years. But actually look at what you're doing and why you're doing it and do it with purpose and do it uniformly.
Well, then would you, besides the two council members, would you go out and put out a thing to the city and gather up city people?
I think that my idea initially, I think, is to like try and develop an idea and a plan. And then, yes, you go out and you ask for citizens' input, absolutely.
Would it just be just the two city council members that would be doing it?
And staff and just trying to get a plan, bring the plan back. Have everyone look at the plan and say, well, this looks like something we might want to do. We might want to tackle. And then you reach out and you get people to help you tackle it.
I would make a motion that the mayor head this up.
Me too. It's totally my motion.
And I'll let you figure out who the other member might be.
There's just so many people excited about it here.
I would like to be it because you know I'm concerned about the looks of the.
I would have suggested you, but I was going to let the mayor.
Yeah, and hopefully who's ever taken care of our star garden down here.
Yes.
There's some, there are some local people doing it.
Yes, they are, absolutely. Yes, they are lovely people.
Those would be the ones to find out.
Absolutely, I agree. I agree.
Mayor Garance, I would suggest that someplace along the line that the committee or staff get in touch with a landscape architect.
Oh, yes.
Who knows how to plant trees.
Absolutely.
Knows what might grow here successfully and not destroy the streets and the sidewalk and stuff like that.
I know, because some of the trees we have now, they're beautiful, but instead of growing up, they're growing out.
Yeah.
You know, toward the street.
And so there, there are different ways to go about it, even, you know, big submit planter deals. But it's something that I would need a consensus for and then if.
Yeah, I'm a vote.
Go for it.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. So Julie.
I'd like to do it.
So I would like to appoint myself and Julie to the ad hoc committee regarding the gateway landscaping. And now we can move on. Move on to city response to the notice of filing for Riedel Fire Protection District annexation.
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Members of the council, on page 30 is your item. The city received a notice of filing for the proposed annexation of the fire service area served by, served by the Riedel Fire Protection District, including Scotia, Redcrest and Shively. That would include the divestiture of power to provide fire protection services by the Scotia Community Services District. So in the notice of filing, there's a request that the city respond with any comments regarding the proposal. And so staff has reviewed the proposal and is making a recommendation that LAFCO also include all of the incorporated city of Riedel within the Riedel Fire Protection District, which would include the sawmill annexation area to the north of the Mudget Bridge on US 101. It's also known as the Humboldt Riedel Business Park or Eel River Sawmills. But the area also includes the city's wastewater disposal field on the other side of the freeway. And currently, this area is within the city limits of Riedel, but fire protection services are provided for, through the Fortuna Fire Protection District. And so we believe that this change is consistent with state law and LAFCO policy. With that, I'll return it to the council.
Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make?
It's not totally related, but there are a couple of volunteer fire companies. And they, fire companies have a totally different legal standing than a fire protection district. Fire protection districts can levy taxes and fees to finance themselves. Fire companies, they hold yard sales and cookie sales and hamburger sales and things like that to raise money. And so for a couple of these companies, it's going to be a huge change in the finances. And it'll, it'll raise a lot of money, but it's going to affect people that aren't used to spending a lot of money on fire protection. And they're going to get to spend money on fire protection.
That's a big area.
It is. I have a question. This is just from my knowledge. It says required that the existing Riedel FPD special assessment be extended to all applicable parcels within the proposed annexation. Would they have to take a vote on that? I mean, we had to vote on it.
They have to take a vote.
Yeah.
No?
I actually looked into this because I was curious about it. And if you annex something, you do not have to take a vote. The, the voting process is considered the public input on the annexation.
Oh, okay.
This, this is a process that ultimately involves LAFCO, the local agency, formation commission. And it's, it's not something that's done over a weekend. It's something that takes months to come to maturity.
Well, I think it's up to us. But why was it not, when we annexed that part of the city or whatever we did when we extended our boundary, why was it not at that time put into the Riedel Fire District?
That belongs to Fortuna Fire District.
I think they had to.
You have to, you have to work it out with them.
Yeah.
It's, it's their fire district up to the bridge.
Even though we.
Well, I went to a deal. I went to a deal over here with Shane and Chief Broadstock. They met over at the wine, wine, with the theater in Scotia and went over this. And where they've talked to the, you know, to Shively and I think they go down to Redcrest. They go out and they do some stuff out of Blue Slide Road.
Yeah.
And my understanding was, you've looked into it deeper. But what I understood Shane to say was if there's initial, basically if there was no challenge, it didn't have to be voted on. If someone challenged it of a certain, like, almost like a 215 thing that we do, then it would, it could turn into a voting situation. I'm, I'm asking if that's, if I'm incorrect in what I heard from Shane or I heard it wrong.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I was just saying, Cheryl, didn't you look, say you looked into it?
That's for annexations.
That's for annex, now is this, this is not annexation.
This, this is.
That would be the fire district. I, I believe my understanding from them is that the fire district has to, it has to be negotiated between Fortuna and Riedel or this, this fire district. Because it's Fortuna's, I believe there's, it's a Fortuna address or a Fortuna zip code all the way up to, almost up to the bridge, yeah.
Up to the bridge.
And so I think, I, I mean, I don't know.
The, the Fortuna thing's a different deal.
Yeah, that, I think that's.
That's different than what.
But that's what we're asking them to do, right?
That's.
You can ask them that, but I'm just saying this, the thing that, that I understood LAFCO and what, like I said, the chief Shane and Broadstock weren't talking about, he, he had briefly adjusted and addressed it and said, look, we talked to them and they didn't want to give it up because they get, they get some property tax. But all this other stuff with these, these smaller companies or eight or, are still going to remain there. Scotia was going to remain Scotia. The next ones down are going to remain those, but they don't have any, they don't have any funding. And so by the, by the fact that they become part of this fire district, then they have this assessment. Then they get, then they get money coming to them. And it, and it appeared from everything I heard, it was all in their best interest. And informally, the, the issue, when they tried to, to merge this with the, Scotia tried to get one of these assessments such as Riedel House. Because at that time they did it, there was only like four or five parcel owners in Scotia. And the majority of those belonged to the lumber company. And so they voted it down. Now that they've broken the system up to where they're selling individual parcels, they no longer have that majority. And so when they, when they talked to the residents, the residents liked the idea. Otherwise, you're going to horse around and you're going to lose your fire protection. And, and most of your communities want fire protection, so. But they have to go through LAFCO in order to make this work. And if there's, if there's a percentage of a protest by a certain percentage of the voters or residents of the affected areas, then it changes some rules. And you'd have to talk to Shane about that to understand it. But to me, it sounded like a good deal. Now, to request this annexation, I don't have a problem with that either. It, it only seems logical that we would do that, but that's another, that's another conversation.
Yeah, I think that's another conversation and I don't think it's, no, I don't think we should do this. That's up to them. It's up to the fire district, it's not up to them.
Wait, what?
It's up to the Riedel Fire District if they want to pursue that annexation north of.
Oh, north of the bridge? Well, that's true, I think, but they asked us for input. I think this is our input that we would like to see that be incorporated into, for all the reasons. It is clear, it is closer, they do respond anyway, Riedel, whoever closes is going to respond. And so I think that is, I don't think it's unreasonable to have that portion of the city of Riedel underneath Riedel's Fire Department.
I don't have a problem with the letter and I don't have a problem with, with the annexation, the annexation or how we want to word it on the filing to LAFCO. But I don't have a problem as a city requesting that.
I mean, we don't have, we don't make the decision, it's just us asking.
Doesn't cost us anything to ask.
Right, exactly.
It's, it's close to firsters. We're going to respond.
And we respond anyway.
If it's a big fire, we're going to respond.
We respond anyway.
They're going to respond on mutual aid anyway. The, the thing that's at the crux to the issue is who gets the property tax money? And what did, I think, somebody told me, did you tell me it was about $1,500 a year is about what it was?
We took a, a quick look at it and again, I think there's a lot of misconceptions about the, you know, amount of money derived off of property taxes for local fire districts or for the city. But it appears that it's about $1,500 a year.
Now, now, if the business part turned into what it's envisioned to be, that number could be significant because those property values would go up.
And again, so, you know, while there's maybe a financial implication, it's, you know, staff's recommendation to move forward with the letter because we were asked to provide input and because it's also consistent with state law and also LAFCO policies. It is a part of the Incorporated City of Riedel. It is the expectations, I think, a common expectation amongst anybody who would look at that area, that it would be covered by the Riedel Fire Protection District.
It would seem that's our spirit and thoughts anyway.
Anyone, what, any other questions, does anyone? It does. I'm just have to ask if the member of the public, anyone from the community would like to make a statement or ask a question? No, we're all good, okay. I'll bring it back. So I think this is a vote. Is there a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the attached letter?
I would so move, Mayor Garance.
So second?
I'll second it. Or she can, I don't know.
Okay, we have a motion in two seconds?
Yes.
You have a vote?
Five seconds.
Motion carries four, one. Thank you. Now to page 37, discussion on the Water Shut Off Protection Act. Presentation by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. Just a clarification on this particular item. We're not asking for action from the council tonight. But to try to just give the council a brief overview of the Water Shut Off Protection Act and see if there's any additional questions from the council or clarification that the council would like. Staff can return with the first reading of the proposed ordinance and have answers to those questions. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to our interim finance director, Cheryl Dillingham.
So I've been working on this project and basically the intent of this bill is to try to protect people from water shut off that have the inability to pay. And the primary thing that it does is it stretches out the amount of time that people have before their water is shut off. And currently, we shut off water around the 47th day because you go, you do the bill and then the bills become delinquent. And it's 60 days from the delinquent date that this bill kicks in. So right now, we're doing, we're doing 20, we're doing 20 days from delinquency. So it goes from 47 days to 86 days under this bill. Some of the, the first thing we have to do is we have to take all of the shut off language out of the existing ordinance because we need to put it into a policy adopted by resolution, which we'll also come to your council. And let's see, they're all bullet pointed out here, I could read them. Most of these things we actually already have in our ordinance. We have a, there's already a alternative plan in the ordinance. There's already an appeal process in the ordinance. So most of this is just kind of putting it together in one place and making it readily available for people to see and communicate that information better. So the biggest thing, there's also some challenges with getting the financial system to actually deal with alternative payment plans and what that's going to look like. Part of the reason this, well, I have a proposed process here. It pretty much keeps our exact process that we have now and just stretches it out. So, so there'll basically be 30 days where we don't do shut offs. And then the process just starts over basically what we're doing now. And currently, people owe a past due month plus one month. Under this, they'll have past due, they'll have two past due months plus one month. And that, I can answer questions.
Anyone have a question in council? This is a state law, correct?
It's a state law.
Yeah, that we just, there's no.
But we're already basically compliant to it. Where it's not, it's not that, we're going to have to do it no matter what.
Exactly.
And, but we're already basically there.
Except for the 60 days.
Up to the 60 days.
When does this have to be put into place?
April 1st.
April 1st.
April Fool's Day.
That could end up to be quite a bit of money if it's the current.
Yes.
Just like this one here I was looking at. Their past due. Their past due was two hundred and seven. I don't know if they came in and paid it or not, but if they didn't, then they would owe four hundred and three dollars, and that's just for...
Two months.
Two months. That could, that could really...
So you'd add another two hundred to that.
Yeah.
So then when we make, this is just for information, I'm not questioning any of it, because I know it's going to go in, but so, like, this one part, it says, you know, you authorize payment plans and things, but it says a partial or full reduction of the unpaid balance financed without additional charges to the other ratepayers. How could you give them a full reduction of their money owed and not have a...
There, it's an or.
Huh?
So...
And/or.
It's a, shall offer one or more, so you have to offer at least one. And basically, a partial or full reduction, you can't do that unless you have some source of funding to offer, because you can't use public funds to pay somebody else's bill. So most agencies are not doing C, but some agencies that have the ability to maybe bring in, like, DHHHS or some other social services who will pick up that, or some other source of funding, can offer that, but we can't, you can't really do it.
And what do we do if they move? Their bill gets so high?
That's, that, I think, is the biggest risk here, is they get so high that people will move. And those, those bills are, they have two components, they have the water and the sewer component, and as it currently works, the sewer component is put as a lien, but the water component, so this is assuming it's a renter, because homeowners usually don't up and leave because they didn't pay their water bill.
And a rental house, can you make it that the homeowner, whoever owns the house, is responsible for the bill? I mean, can it be done? I'm not saying that it should be done, I'm just wondering if it can be done, where if you have a rental, you're responsible for the bill.
I think you already are.
So my understanding is usually the reason you don't do that is because of the usage component, so you could, so currently, the property owner is responsible for the sewer portion. The way, it's, I believe it's in a resolution for what we put on the liens, and it's just sewer. We discussed the possibility that you could put the portion of the water bill that is the, like, base, which is for the infrastructure more so, and maybe put that onto the owner, but ultimately, what you're going to do is the city would get more money and the rents would go up. But that is an option. We could revisit how we do liens, and then you put the lien on the property owner.
Well, he can recoup his money by raising, I have one other. So, in a year, I had asked Kyle, how much money do we, for unpaid bills, when people skip, in a year, how much do we, right now, write off?
So annually, the rate over the past three years has ranged, or the amount has ranged from five thousand dollars to eleven thousand dollars roughly.
So it might considerably go up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what about the review and appeal process? How much time does that add on to it, if they do that?
They have to request that prior to shut-off. So you can't, if your water gets shut-off, you don't get a payment plan alternative. You have to request a payment plan and pay on it to get your water not...
On day eighty-six, they file an appeal? How much is it going to? What's extension time does that give them then? I mean, we could be really looking at some money.
We can usually review most of those appeals pretty fast, because they have to have a, I mean, appeals are really only if there's a broken water line or some sort of reason why they've been incorrectly charged. So it's pretty straightforward, there's already approved process for that, and they come in, they fill out a form, the city manager's authorized to approve those, they can be done very quickly.
There's no appeal for, you didn't pay your water bill. There is no appeal for that, so... On day eighty-six, they didn't come in to do that.
The council did not approve an appeal for, I just don't want to pay my bill.
Oh, I can't afford it. Isn't that what this is about? They can't afford it.
They...
This is... But they would have come in before that and requested.
But that's not why they can, they can't appeal it because they can't afford it.
All right.
When you said that we lose, I'm sorry.
Go, no, go, go.
Oh, I'm sorry. When we lose five to ten thousand a year, is that after we send it to collections? Because we do send...
That's just the water portion, oh, yeah. That was, that was written off, so yes, that's after we send it, that was write-off.
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Kyle, could you or staff look into what other cities are doing to protect themselves from the bad debt that would arise if, you know, a whole bunch of people skipped? I mean, one thing that comes to mind is you just, your initial turn-on fee becomes astronomical.
Yeah, so some of the changes that cities are making, that I've seen, are increasing the deposit amounts. So that is an option.
So you make that five hundred dollars and, or some such number, instead of two hundred, whatever we have now?
You could. I would recommend that, you know, the council look at that down the road after a year or two's worth of implementation, and if this is dramatically increasing, then that might be a good option to try to mitigate the impacts from the legislative changes. Right now, the trend is actually downwards in terms of how much is written off each year. So it'll be interesting to see how the impact of this moving forward.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience? Would you like to ask a question, make a comment? No, having none? Yeah, absolutely.
So if we're going to move this back at some point, can you tell me how it would work if we didn't require an owner of a property to be somewhat responsible?
So that particular topic is really more of when we go through a rate adjustment process and rework the bill process for the water and sewer side. This is really specific to kind of what the state is mandating the city to do, so that would be, you know, my recommendation is to, you know, have that as, you know, an item that, that we look at in a rate adjustment process, which, you know, we need to perform one of those over the next year or two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Final item, the second reading by title only, and adoption of ordinance three seven eight dash two zero one nine, establishing a water-efficient landscape ordinance. Chapter thirteen point four zero of the Riedel Municipal Code.
So, Mayor Garance, members of the council, this item's on page forty-seven of your packet. Unfortunately, Community Development Director Caldwell is not able to be here tonight, so staff is just recommending at this time that we go ahead and just continue this item to the next meeting.
Anyone good with that? Okay, then, so it shall be. Thank you. Council reports, communications.
I've got a meeting with RCA, yeah, Thursday, so I already don't have any to update. I will comment on, I did, since we met HWMA, I asked them about this, someone came in here and asked about the numbers on the bottom of the little containers. On the bottom of the plastic container, there's a recycle number. And they only have told us in the past that only ones and twos were sellable, and so later I asked, well, then you want to just tell us to throw everything above a two into the regular garbage? And they said, no, 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 don't do that. We want, we want those containers. And what we were told at the last meeting is that the numbers that are on the bottom, there's no real regulation about what those are. It's kind of what people decide to put on them. And so they have, they have ways of sorting out, and they're also looking for ways to sell it. And they sell half of, they're selling half of their recycle in the United States now. Most of the other stuff is broken up. The other, that other half of the pie chart was broken into at least ten different categories, where countries are three percent, five percent, seven percent, most of your Asian countries. And so it's, it's an ongoing, the recycling thing's an ongoing issue on how to make it work, and they're more concerned about the contamination. They did a study on all the cities, they only looked at two loads from Riedel, so I didn't take it real serious, but they said there was, we had twenty percent contamination in our, in those two loads of fourteen hundred pounds. And so, but people would put like a half a bottle of barbecue sauce inside, and anything that's contaminated, if it's not clean, if you have a piece of gum in a water bottle, then it's considered contaminated. But if you have a bottle like barbecue sauce and it gets in there and it goes through their, they have a fairly automated system now that, shake it, it's like big shakers, and it's, in that, if that bottle gets broke or crushed, then that contaminates a whole bunch more garbage. So the, one of the big things, if you said anything to the public and anybody listening, is to mainly put clean stuff in your, in your recycle. Don't, don't put a, like a yogurt container with old yogurt in it, you wash it out and put it in as clean, and that's a big, that's one of the big differences. But that's something that, when they really look at what people can do to, their help towards doing stuff clean in the environment, that's an easy thing to do, is to recycle. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Next month, early, there'll be a Last Chance Grade Stakeholders Meeting in Crescent City, and at that meeting, we will be meeting the consultant who Caltrans will be hiring or has hired to prepare the environmental document, do the initial studies, and thirty-one million dollar contract, or thereabouts, that they will be awarded. So it's a, it's a big deal, it's a big step for Last Chance Grade moving forward. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, councilmember. Little? I have a League of Cities Environmental Policy Committee meeting Friday. I will be attending in Sacramento. And that's it. Your motion?
I'd move for adjournment.
Second, meeting adjourned.